Good evening. I'm calling to order the special meeting for the Board of Education. Today is Monday, June 25th, and we are meeting at the Ford ICE Administration Building. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
Tom Roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Here.
Mrs. Lize.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Soodar.
Here.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections or revisions to the agenda?
Yes, Mrs. Van Hope, we have two additions. They will be Item 11A, Classified Staff Program, additions and reductions, and Item 12A will be Facilities Presentation.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on an item relative to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on then to the presentation on Race to the Top. Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Hope. As the Board is well aware, the Euclid City Schools has been the beneficiary of a Race to the Top grant. It is a competitive grant that we applied for two years ago and were lucky enough to have received. I say lucky enough because it has, I say it sort of tongue-in-cheek because there's been a lot of work, and spearheading the efforts for the district has been Dr. Selico. And Dr. Selico is prepared to give a brief update tonight about our status with Race to the Top.
Can we get someone to get the lights over there, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I thought it would be easier to have this format of a presentation rather than doing our checklist of things that have been happening because we've made a lot of progress over the last two years. And so, as we are completing year two, we will be heading into years three and four, but I thought this would be a nice time to kind of stop, reflect on what we've done, and report to you about the work that we've accomplished, and then the work yet to come. So if you will just allow me here to go through a few slides with you, and you do have a number of handouts in front of you in the packet, and they should be in order in which the presentation flows, hopefully. So as a reminder, Race to the Top, we started a couple of years ago, and there was, at the time, we formed a team of 10, which is a recommendation, or a requirement of the stipulations in regards to Race to the Top. And so, the team of 10 consisted of five administrators, five teachers, and that team has remained intact since the inception of our work. And we continue to meet monthly, and we were really good about meeting every month and sticking to our plan, which were Mondays from 3:00 to 5:00. And in addition to the monthly meetings, we've also attended a number of conferences and workdays in addition to those meetings, just because we had a great deal of work that still needed to be accomplished. The symposium took place, there was a symposium in Columbus approximately the end of May, I believe, or beginning of May, I can't remember, it all seemed so long ago, but it wasn't really. Dr. Jones attended, as well as I did, and we were able to see a variety of, you were able to sign up for a number of different sessions that you thought were, that pertained to the work that you were doing. So I went to a couple on teacher evaluation system, as well as teacher linkage with value-added. And so, that was over two, there were over 2,000 educators at that symposium, and it was a really big deal. It was advertised, every time I opened up my email, I felt like I was getting a different invitation to attend. So that recently took place. Again, we've had a number of workdays in which we spent a number of hours together, and really, a great, I think, working team between the teachers and administration. We really have been able to make a lot of ground, reach agreement with little complications. The scope of work, as a reminder, is a very large document that we were required to fill out in order to apply for this, and so it's been sort of, it has been guiding our work. And within that scope of work, there are goals, action steps, and measures and targets in which we are striving for to complete. There are four assurance areas, one of which we are not required to address, but in those assurance areas are standards and assessment, great teachers, great leaders, and using data to improve instruction. And the final one there is the turnaround, which again is for very low-achieving school districts, in which we don't, we're not part of, thankfully. So the accomplishments this year, the next several slides will highlight what we've done, and I will point out to you when there are some handouts for you to review. The first big initiative that we've tackled the entire school year was the Ohio Teacher System Evaluation System, which is the ODE test, and I see, I forgot the evaluation word in there, but it's Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, and that too was a team of 10, but not the same 10 people that are on the Race to the Top Transformation Team. This is also, this team also consists of five teachers and five administrators, and we two met, not monthly, but frequently throughout the year, every six weeks with a couple of extra meetings thrown in there because of the work, again, that needs to be done. So we met throughout the year, we were working on aligning the ODEs model, there's one that recently, it's just been recently released, however, we've been working on it all year long, looking at Resident Educators Model. Also, they released some forms early on, but the state, and then pulled them back, so we got snippets of things, but we went ahead and took all the guidelines and the format of the Ohio Evaluation Teacher Evaluation System, and made it, gave it the Euclid Flares, how I refer to it. So in your packet, you should see, it's a number of, there are a number of forms that we created. So this is for you to look at. The reason I included it for you is because it'd be way too much for me to go over with you this evening, but I certainly can address any questions that are, if you need to call or email me, I'll be glad to answer any questions for you. But as you can see just by the thickness of the packet, that there is, there are a lot of steps to this process, and a lot of forms, and a lot of demands that are going to be placed on principals as well as teachers. It'll be a much more rigorous process and time-consuming process for teachers and principals. Again, we created our forms and system, and I created a form at the beginning, just so you can see, if you want to just do the abbreviated version first, I made two different documents for the principals to guide them. One is the first one, it's a table that shows the timelines in which, what do I need to do in September as a principal? What do I do in October? What do I do in April? Which forms do I need to fill out? So I laid it out there, as well as a nice visual representation, which is the next page, and it's in color, and it says basically the same thing, but depending on the type of organization the principal or administrator would like to have, it's organized for them. And this, again, is principals, assistant principals, this could be Kim Allen, Director of People's Services, who evaluates teachers, it could be me, if I were to evaluate a teacher, it's anyone who is evaluating teachers. And we are all required to go through a three-day training, and we actually, at the end of it, take a little test, and so we can be certified trainers. So this is a big deal. I know, I personally attend in July, July 10th through, 11th through 13th, but I've asked all the administrators to give me the dates, and we're working on getting everyone enrolled, but there are over 15,000 educators that have to be trained, so the, filling these slots, there's definitely no shortage of that, so a lot of people are on waiting lists. There are ratings and percentages, again, just as a reminder, I may have shared this before, but teachers will be rated in regards to, well, the four areas are accomplished, proficient, developing, and ineffective. So everyone will receive a rating. What our job is to do, we are also assigned percentages. So as a group, what we've decided is 50%, a non-negotiable from the state of Ohio, is that 50% of the evaluation system is based on growth measures. We have not crossed that hurdle, and I'll speak of that in just a moment. The other percentages come in regards to goal-setting, which is 10%, communications and professionalism, which is 10%, then the other 30% are the teacher observations. The two observations that we do, those will stay intact, and those are the other 30% of the entire evaluation. We are still working on those, we'll pilot it next year, which is also something I wanted to mention. So we'll pilot it in the fall, whereas every administrator, every building administrator will go through this system with two certified staff members. And the Board of Education, Central Office, will each do one certified staff member. And we're working in collaboration with ETA to select those teachers. We're letting teachers volunteer, I put it in my last newsletter, if people want to volunteer that are on the cycle for evaluation, we will offer professional development hours to them, because it is going to be, you know, time-consuming, and it is a learning experience, and there will be a lot of professional growth as a result. So we need to have, by July 1, 2013, so in a year from now, we have to have a plan that's approved by all of you, the Board of Education, and submitted to the ODE, Ohio Department of Ed, again, by that date. And so, we will be working next year again, after the pilot has taken place, to revise, get feedback from all the participants. I will set up a meeting in the fall, meet with everyone, lay out the plan, and then set up subsequent meetings for feedback and offering, getting suggestions from teachers and administrators on how we can tweak this to make it best work for everyone. So still to do in this process, however, is define growth measures, which we know is going to be a sticky topic. It's 50% of a teacher's evaluation, naturally, they're going to be concerned about that, as well as we are. There is a list that was, has been provided by ODE of choices in which you can choose, and a combination of local measures versus vendor assessments versus OAA, and you need to use, you have to look if there is a measure of value, math, reading, and science all have value-added in grades three through eight, and, I'm sorry, four through eight, and five and eight are science-only, and you have to use those as some portion of the growth measure. It could be 1%, it could be 50%, should you choose to use that, but there can be a combination of local assessments, vendor assessments, and then the value-added subject areas, which are math, reading, and science, again, in those.
Math, reading, and science?
Math and reading, four through eight, and then science, fifth and eighth. And you'll see that in another slide, I think, I have that coming up. It should, I think it's in a slide on your PowerPoint coming up. So the, again, we have to define the growth measures. We also have left to do the plans of assistance and tenure requirements. We simply ran out of time, it was a lot to tackle, and again, I commend the group that worked on this, but we still have to have some conversations about our plans of assistance, which our students, or I'm sorry, teachers in need of, you know, more help, that may be struggling in an area or two. And then tenure requirements. Essentially, we don't have anything right now that is systemic, that is consistent, it's just a yes-no from a principal requirement, with obviously, the principal reviewing credentials, et cetera, but there's no, there are no forms to be filled out, there's no requirements on the behalf of the teacher. And there are other districts who use a quite lengthy, rigorous process, and I've seen some that are distinct, asking them to produce, teachers to produce portfolios, et cetera. So that is something else we will be working on. Next, talk a little bit about collaboration. We successfully came up with an MOU, which you signed a few board meetings ago, and there's a handout there, I thought, again, I don't want to give you all the details for length of time here, the, in interest of the time, so there's a handout there that will give you all of the information on each grade level elementary, or grade band, elementary, middle, and high school, and should be pretty self-explanatory in the sense, at least elementary and middle, which is before school, is when collaboration will continue to take place. And high schools has a little bit different, a couple nuances to it. The benefit of all of this is that there's an allocated time for collaboration. We firmly believe that collaboration is key to our achievement and to our future success, and therefore, we needed to allocate time. And being considerate of the teachers' time and the time they already put in, we needed to build it into the schedule, and we were able to do so through some compromise on both sides. So that is our collaboration. Next, you've heard us talk about teacher linkage. We have been working on, that's the teacher value-added, again, there it is, the four through eight, math and reading, and five and eight, science. So we were able to participate in that this year, whereas the percentages are linked to individual students and teachers. So I am going to assign, in my class, by individual, how much time that child spends with me. If I have a regular education classroom and no one is being pulled out of my classroom, it's 100% I'm responsible for each child. If a child goes to Special Education Services or Tier Two tutoring, there's a percentage that's assigned. So if they go to an intervention period with intervention specialists every day for an hour, then that teacher may get 20% as a special education teacher, would get 20% as a regular ed teacher, I might get 80%. And so these percentages are assigned, and we've provided training and webinars for principals and teaching staff. And so, April through May, we were working on that system. There was a window of time in which teachers could go in and do, assign their students and the percentages to each one, and then there was this roster verification process, whereas the principals had to go in and verify that the percentages were accurate. Because as you can imagine, there's going to be some discrepancies, and some debates, and some discussion that would take place, so the principal has the final say on the roster verification, during the roster verification process. So that's been closed, and now in the fall, we should have the reports back in our hands, end of summer, maybe early fall, and we'll be able to see teacher value-added reports as to just school and district, which have been, that's how we've had it in the past. In regards to curriculum and instruction, this FAST, and forgive me for the acronym without explaining what it is, it's Formative Assessments and...
Support Team.
Support Team? Okay, thank you. And what it is, is we spend $1,000 per teacher, and again, this is paid through Race to the Top. And I want you to keep in mind, as I'm talking particularly about this slide, the amount of money that we're expending on things that we're concerned about the sustainability when Race to the Top goes away. And I have a slide at the end to show you the amounts of money that we've spent, and then the questions, you know, coming, how are we going to sustain these initiatives? Because we won't have the money anymore. So the FAST, we were able to train, we've already trained 11 teachers, and these teachers go out and they receive intensive seven full days with an instructor, instructor from Cleveland State, and she is sort of the guru on Formative Assessments, and so our teachers are getting more knowledge to come back and share with their colleagues. What I've asked Mr. Hanacheck to do this year is to take those teachers who have been trained and form an internal cohort of support, because I'm afraid what happens is, is you go out, and this happens with all of us, this isn't just teachers, we go out, we learn something we don't share, and that's the, that's the idea behind professional development and collaboration, is to share with others. So this could be a more, I feel, a better approach to disseminating the information that has been gained. This year, we are sending 13 of our coaches to this FAST training, so all our reading, math, technology coaches, and our high school content coaches are looking to, I have the flyer, I saw it, Dr. Jones, it's in my mailbox today, I will be enrolling everyone in that program this week. Next, we've done a lot of work on the Common Core. As you recall, we made a number of summer payments for people's work for curriculum in regards to curriculum mapping, and pacing, and aligning the Common Core standards with our curriculum. And we also were able to purchase, it's a web-based tool for, it's called MyAtlas, and what it does is it helps you with your curriculum mapping. So you can plug in topics during certain points of the year, and it does all your mapping for you. Again, a big expense, $17,000 and $19,000 for this program. And I think it lessens, a lot of these things that I've been paying for, such as AmesWeb through Race to the Top, AmesWeb Map, MyAtlas, this Mastery Connect I'll tell you about, is based on per pupil. So you're paying maybe $5 student, $14 student, it just depends. So that's how the costs are associated, so it can fluctuate. The Instructional Improvement System, Dr. Jones said to me, what are you going to say about that? Because it's sort of that one thing that has been hovering, and each time we sort of brush over it, we say, oh, IIS, and then we sort of move on, because we still haven't acquired the information to our satisfaction to feel comfortable enough to stand up here and explain it to you. But again, it's a warehouse of information, of data, that you can hopefully find, teacher licensure information, they're talking about curriculum, lessons, data on each student, and the idea is to transfer, whenever a child transfers to another district, whether it's Cincinnati, Columbus, Euclid, that information will follow, you'll be able to go into the database, pull up that information on the child. Now, that's only as good as if the district is participating in this IIS. So if the district doesn't subscribe to this, if you will, then, you know, it's a little flawed there. So they're still working on that. We may have some more information in the spring, next spring, and maybe even, they're talking about some piloting, but again, this has been pushed back several times now, so still awaiting.
By the state.
By the state, yes. Then finally, again, Common Formative Assessments, we've been working on those, we are, you know, really, really working hard and coming to an end of providing Common Formative Assessments at all grade levels and all subject areas. So that is a very large task. And our math and reading, our core subjects are near completion. And we also purchased with the money is Mastery Connect, which is a way of administering Common Formative Assessments to the students, and it just, it basically, you get instant results, generates reports, it's to the point where you can actually, if you, if you give a, an assessment and you have the answers here, you can hold it in front of the computer, and the webcam takes a picture of it, and it downloads the results and spits them right back out. So I'm not sure how all of that works exactly, but it's just amazing. So again, there was a $20,000 purchase. Okay, more accomplishments this year, gain sharing, I put the MOU in front, and you should have a copy of that as well, again, to give you the details, and as a reminder, this was, we are establishing common goals and building level goals. You often hear the word merit pay, we all are familiar with that term. A gain sharing is a variation of that, and merit pay is more individual, whereas gain sharing, the notion behind this is teamwork and collaboration, and we all kind of win together. And so that's what we've agreed to this year, and so, for this past school year, and we'll examine for the following school year. But we established common goals, and it was done by school, and the criteria is that they must, each building must meet three out of five goals. And so we established those goals as a whole, as well as, there was one in which the school could actually pick their goal that they wanted to do. So some people did parent satisfaction surveys, others did discipline areas, some did Marzano Smart Goals, it just varied on one of them. The others include report card, growth designations, attendance, staff, student attendance, et cetera, and you have that in front of you. The awards will be determined in the fall, I've mapped out so far, I know how, in, I was able to look at almost all the goals, with the exception of the report card designation. So when that comes, I will be able to complete this, and we can determine who has met their goals. So I have a sheet that I put together, and I've checked off schools that have met each one, each indicator, because I pulled the staff attendance and et cetera. We set aside $56,000 for the 11-12 school year, and next year's allocation is $63,000. So that is determined based on the number of teachers who win, who win this award, if you will. And so if there's, let's say, 100 staff members, maybe two schools get it, and there's 100 certified staff members, then we would take that number and divide it by 100 and come up with an amount. With that said, we set a $400 cap. So depending on, you can, you may get $100, you may get $400, it just depends on how many schools are awarded the gain sharing award. So that's the gain sharing, and then...
And that's Race to the Top funds.
Yes. All of these are, again, more money, you can see it adding up. The Resident Educator Program, we've completed year one, I have overseen that program, and I have a handout for you as well, and what I did, there are a number of forms with this process, but I did not want to share all of them with you, simply because many of them are very similar to the Teacher Evaluation System, except there are more of them. This is a very long process for our new teachers. You're struggling, I've had many conversations with our first-year teachers, saying, I know you're struggling, just to keep your head above water, and I know the new faces, I've talked with you about the Resident Educator Program, and I didn't really sugarcoat it, did I, Bridgette? So it's long, and it's a lot of paperwork, and I feel for them, but in theory, it's excellent, but in execution, it has its challenges. So I just provided with you the overview, and you can see the flow of which the Resident Educators have to, have to have that, that whole year-long process, and times four. So this is a four-year program, and year two is pretty intense, we've learned recently, it'll be similar to year one. Years three and four, I think, will hopefully level off. But I'm part of a consortium, I chose to just stay, I get, I'm updated regularly, there's several of us, local administrators that meet at the ESC, and we share information with one another. So we've had to, so we had to select mentors, now let me again say to you that the mentors are paid with supplementals, and this is something that we don't have a choice, it's not going away, as far as we know. The Resident Educator Program in two years, some of these other things, we might make a decision not to continue, MyAtlas, curriculum mapping, whatever it may be, this is something we can't just wash our hands of, we must continue and provide this service. So the mentor selection process, there was a process in which, this is the first time ever, where I've required mentors to fill out paperwork, they had to show why they'd be a good mentor, they had to meet with me, and then we selected the mentors, and we had a good crop of mentors, it was a lot of work for them as well, and a lot of hours. I estimated, I had them fill out a form, and it came to about 70 hours per mentor invested in this, on average, some were more, some were less. So we had nine Resident Educators this year and mentors, again, there were trainings, there was consortium, and then at the end of the year, I met, I should say, along the way here, I went in and I observed informally each teacher. Just I wanted to show my face, say how you're, how are you doing, how's it going, anything I can help you with, went to see them informally or formally, and then at the end, I met with each individual, the resident educator and their, and his or her mentor, and we, there's an end-of-year reporting that takes place, they have to provide me some forms, I asked them what their goals were, how they felt they accomplished them, how did they rate, I asked the mentor to chime in, areas of maybe weakness or improvement, and strengths, and then I had to go into a reporting system setup, and I checked off that each one met their requirements, which all did satisfactorily, so that's some good news. Report Card Committee, we worked, I provided with you, provided for you just the first-grade report card as an example, but kindergarten and second grade are very similar, it's just the only differences are the standards. Okay, so these are, to let you know, we had a committee, a couple of teachers on each grade level throughout the district, kindergarten, first and second grade. We met several times, and I will tell you this, for someone who likes to get things done and get them done quickly, I was cognizant of the teacher's time and said, well, I'll give you, maybe next month we can meet. And they said, no, Hunter, we want to do it, and we'll meet again in two weeks or three. So they pushed me, which was good, because they were really doing all the work, I was just sort of shepherding the process. And they worked really well together, they solicited input from every educator K2 in this district, so every educator had a chance at input, they emailed the report cards and what it would look like, so they were able to give feedback. And a lot of times we met, but they also did a lot of independent work, and I was very proud of them in the time that they put in on their own, and really were diligent, and got back to me when I asked questions, when I posed questions, when I asked them to review things, it was great. So we had a number of goals, and what I was fearful of is what's happened in the past, and this can happen with anything, but you send off a kindergarten group, a first grade, a sixth grade, whatever the grade levels may be, and you come back with seven distinct products that aren't, that do not, that aren't consistent, that don't have continuity. So we, for meeting one, we set up a number of goals, and those were consistency, continuity, parent-friendly, and the most important really, is standards-based, aligning to the new Common Core. But we also set parameters, so I didn't want to have a first-grade teacher have 65 indicators in reading, whereas a third-grade teacher might have 10. So we set parameters and limits, we said no more than 20 standards in reading, no more than 10 in math, five for behavior, five for social skills. Okay, so that's why you see, if you were to see the K and 2, you would see that they parallel very nicely. And then when we head into our work in, for three through five next year, the same criteria will be in place. The good, the, I'm sorry, the indicators that you have on there, exceeding, progressing, but I forget, we've changed them so many times, so they're all there, and those will be the same, aside from the fact that we use A, B, C, and D for the upper grades, but we want to keep it consistent for parents, most importantly. So we will pilot this in the fall, the first grading period, and again, give a chance for some feedback, but teachers had it in their hands at the end of the year, and I did get a couple of comments from a couple of teachers, and was able to change many of the things, a couple of the things I just had to explain why they were the way they were, but we're really excited about getting those implemented K through 2 next year. Finally, this is what I was referring to when I was talking about all the expenditures that we've, that we've made here. And these numbers are deceiving, and I'll tell you why, in the last bullet there in red, it says total budget for 11-12 was $166,000, however, we had carryover from the last year, which was quite a substantial amount of money, tens of thousands of dollars. So when you see salaries and fringes, what I have there is $137,000 for Resident Educator substitutes. The substitutes, again, is teachers who've been out for PD, we cover their substitute costs, but I can tell you that's well over $137,000 that you see there. So the carryover, it just, I didn't account for because I didn't have an exact figure, because they just sort of plug in our money, they do that at the state level. And then we spent a great deal of professional development as well, and materials and supplies, that says $40,000 if you can't read it there, but again, it was more than that. Mastery Connect, MyAtlas, and scanners, right there, that's at least $50,000 if not more. And the purchase services, AmesWeb and MAP, not so sure if it belongs in purchase service or materials and supplies, but those are, as you know, are testing how we assess students. AmesWeb and MAP, and those collectively for the two are $45,000, and those are based on per student.
Per year.
Per year.
So, per year. But the, actually, that's two years. Ames Web is two years included in that. Yeah. So it's not quite $45,000, I'm sorry, for a year. And so you can see, we're well over $200,000 in one year's time spending. And I don't see that diminishing. There's always going to be a need. But I do believe that we've done a great deal of amount of work, a great amount of work, excuse me, in the time that we've had in two years and we have two more years to use this money. We still have several hundred thousand left. We have about, yeah, half a million dollars left. So we'll put it to good use, but I do have some concerns when the money is gone. So that concludes my report. If anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions on the board this time? I have a few, just to get back to what I wrote.
Before you ask your questions, a couple of things that I wanted to point out to you. The teacher evaluation levels of accomplished, proficient, developing, and ineffective. It's important for everyone to understand that proficient is the new good for teacher evaluation. Then the training that has been provided, and my wife is actually a trainer for the state in the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System and the Resident Educator System. They're trying to emphasize that because proficient has come to mean something different to us, as opposed to accomplished or advanced when you talk about proficiency or OAA results. But for teacher evaluations, most teachers will be proficient and that is not a bad thing. That's a good thing. Also, we are struggling with a lot of logistical issues, the whole status. For example, Dr. Selico mentioned the value-added results. And she mentioned adequately that we don't receive those until late in the summer or early in the fall. But the evaluations are due back in April. So you're going to have to be delayed by a year. There are going to be some teachers who are, they're in the first year in the district who won't have results, at first value-added results. And so there are some complicating factors that we, as a state, have not yet figured out. But that's the reason for a pilot year and that's the reason it's not due for most districts until 2013, 2014 school year. And the other thing I'd like to mention, but Dr. Selico has already mentioned it, is unfunded mandates. This is riddled with unfunded mandates and it's very typical, as we have come to understand from the state. But we're cognizant of that effect and will be aware of it for planning purposes, but still it's an issue. And the biggest example is the Resident Educator piece, because that is a requirement. The state used to compensate districts for Resident Educator mentors. There was a small compensation on a per mentor basis and also a per novice teacher basis, I believe.
A small, a couple hundred dollars.
Small, yeah. But they took that away. Didn't take the requirement away and didn't take the requirement for compensation away, but they took away the financials. So.
Yeah, and you know, I have that figure, I'm sorry. I have that figure with the Resident Educator and it costs about $30,000 this year for nine.
But for nine?
For nine. But what happens is it compounds, because next year I have to pay those nine mentors for year two services, but then we're going to have a new crop of teachers coming in. That could be two, four, eight. So you have to, now it's adding and then you have a year three mentor and a year four mentor and you can see how this compounds and the number just increases over time. The supplemental lessons, but nonetheless, you are faced with, if I pay $30,000 this year, and that's not just supplemental, that's some other things included.
And my final commentary is, you can see that there's been a great deal of work behind all of this. And I want to commend Dr. Selico and Mr. Saywell and the rest of the committee for all the work that has been done, both on Race to the Top and Ohio Teacher Evaluation Systems. And what, one of the things that Dr. Selico did not mention, by the way, is that the Ohio Principal Evaluation System is going to parallel the Teacher Evaluation System based on 50% on student growth measures and 50% on performance, with slightly different degrees, or not degrees, but descriptors for achievement. But that is a big challenge for all school districts across the state. But I want to commend you, Andrea, on your leadership and thank you for the work you've been putting into this process.
Thank you.
Ms. Van Hope, before, because I think you have some specific questions. I have kind of a 50,000-foot view question, which is to say, I was on the board when we dealt with No Child Left Behind as a federal mandate. And it struck me at that time that it was national education policy, obviously directed at all 50 states, but it was a better policy tool for some states as opposed to others. And Ohio had already started to take some steps down the whole, you know, student accountability and measurement and performance testing, kind of. And so Ohio was kind of ahead of the game for No Child Left Behind. Again, this is just kind of my recollection, which is to say that as national policy went, considering so much of education policy is formed at the state capitals and not at the federal level. I guess I'm wondering what either your assessment, Dr. Jones, or your assessment, Dr. Selico, whether or not, which is to say again, that No Child Left Behind had its place, but Ohio probably didn't need it as much as some of the other states. I think that's kind of the conclusion that I came to. What is your, and I throw this question to either of you, do you know what the federal goal is and do you know how it compares, how Ohio rates on how much we need this new federal education measure, whether or not, do you understand my question?
Well, I can tell you that the goals of Race to the Top in our scope of work, I reviewed them because I haven't looked at those for a long time. One is to narrow the achievement gaps that are out there, and this is for the state of Ohio as well. And the other is to increase graduation rates for minorities and for all students. But I know those are two big goals of Race to the Top and I don't collect others.
The Common Core State Standards is another issue. The federal government wishes to have a national kind of curriculum and the Common Core State Standards have been, they claim, well, not they claim, it had its genesis in the National Governance Association and has been interpreted into federal programs like Race to the Top. Forty-eight of the 50 states have adopted or embraced the Common Core State Standards and so that is an issue that they're trying to drive. Teacher performance is another one. And accountability for results. And again, whether it's right-minded is the way it's designed or not, that is certainly part of the spearhead of this evaluation system. We had to assign, as Race to the Top, the state of Ohio would not have been awarded a Race to the Top grant from the federal government had we not adopted a new teacher, student growth measure, teacher performance, and evaluation system, as well as one for principals. And so that is being driven by this as well. But I do believe that narrowing the gaps and the improvement of the graduation rate are two of the keys, as well as Dr. Selico has already presented to us. And finally, this whole instructional improvement system is the use of technology in order to support teachers. And in theory, it's, well, like a lot of these things, in theory, it's a great idea. Mr. Saywell and I went to a meeting where we were asked to look over, I don't know, probably 160 goals or objectives, I would say, about an instructional information system, improvement system that is designed to house data that is locally driven, as well as state-driven, to be able to report gaps that way and to track students. And that's another part of the measure too, is to try to use technology to support teachers. The instructional improvement system, I should say, is designed, or the theory is to design it so that there are supports for curriculum, the course standards are there, sample lesson plans and the whole nine yards. It's a big promise that is, has yet to be delivered. It's been delayed and delayed and delayed, as Dr. Selico has mentioned. We were supposed to be able to pilot something this school year and they haven't even gotten the RFP. They haven't even made the award of the RFP yet to the company that's going to be doing this protocol for us. So it's, those are the big, big national, I know, aspects of this on the forum.
Okay.
Okay. I have a couple specifics, but before we get into these, having taught in a small school district, and I know this would never happen here, principals usually do the assigning of what students are in what class. Is there something that the state requires you to show that you've equalized the students so that they have similar classes?
No. What's interesting is they have a requirement that you equally, not equally, but somehow have a system for distributing teachers, effective versus ineffective versus, you know. And so how we handled that was naturally through the consolidation of schools and our bidding process. So that was part of our, also part of our scope of work. But as far as kids are concerned, I've not seen her.
Are you talking specifically in reference to value-added issues?
Yeah. Well, it's student performance, period.
Right.
Because, and like I said, this, of course, our principals would never do this, however, I do know that principals have used the idea of putting certain students in a classroom because they basically didn't like that teacher. And that was their way of kind of punishing them before testing and all that. But I mean, my concern is that that could happen if there's no, you know, they think about dividing up the teachers, but they're not thinking about dividing up the kids and that doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. Most of the, if this makes you feel any better, I don't know, but most of the schools, I can't speak for all of them, but I just know from my recollection and how I operated as a principal, is the grade-level teachers made the classes. I gave them a, and I know that there's a document out there because other principals have used it, we've shared it. And it's looking at race, gender, et cetera. And there's a sheet that everyone fills out and the teachers at grade level then distribute the kids, because they would say, "Mrs. Van Hope, this child cannot be with this child. They had problems," et cetera. So that's really how the classes have been created, with some exceptions of probably principals plucking a few, knowing that, oh, this teacher and this student or this parent, or, you know, the combination might not be great. So there may be some tweaking that happens, but for the majority of the classes being created at elementary level, they're done by the teachers.
Well, elementary is where I would see it more than you would.
Yes, because you're 100%.
Because you're 100% with those kids. But the concern is the new teacher coming in then, because this did actually happen to me personally, we were the new team being formed and the old, the team that was before us got to choose who got to go to the other team versus our team. And lo and behold, we had all the problem students assigned to our team. And it was because they didn't know us, because we were the new, two new teachers that they didn't know. And they knew these other three and had worked with them for, you know, for a full year. And, you know, so there's a concern there that if teachers are making that, it seems like we need a little bit of administrative overview of everything.
Yeah. Lists are typically collected by the principal. They look over them, review them, like I said, make changes and.
Because our principal apologized to the end of the year, saying, "I tried to shake it up, but I guess I didn't do a really good job." And it was like, no, you didn't.
It does happen on occasion.
It does happen, yes. Okay. On teacher linkage, what are they basing the growth on? Is it the student's performance the previous year or is there pre-testing done in September and October?
It is on the previous year's test results.
Okay. So students who take advantage of summer enrichment or tutoring or whatever will have done some growth without that teacher's input. She gets credit for it, basically.
Yes, that's true. Just as teachers who have parents who are, who maybe take their children to the library every week.
Right.
Be part of the library reading program or help kids with their homework. I mean, those things do happen.
Okay.
However, if this is true, it is likely to be true every summer and every year for the particular child and so that change.
Would change their.
Would change, yes.
Okay. Gotcha. On the percentages that are linked to the individual students and teachers, wouldn't that vary somewhat throughout the year if the students pulled out for a time period and then grasped the concept that they needed to then go back full-time into the room?
Yeah, we've had lots of discussion about this, in and out, transients, absences, extended, you know, absences with students. And I'm not quite sure that they have that all ironed out. I don't feel confident that it is all ironed out. But there are times, I believe, that you can go in and change, I don't know if it's by period or grading period. I thought that there was some discussion about that. Now, we didn't do that this year, we didn't have that luxury, because this is just starting out, the whole process. But I can get some more detailed information on that, because I'm not 100%. There's been lots of that out there. Do you know, Dr. Jones?
You know, I don't know. We had that question. We asked that question, as a matter of fact, at the meeting that you and I attended at the ESC. And there was not an, really, in my opinion, an adequate answer for that. They said, "Bear with us, we'll work it through." There are certain work rules that were established and the principals were to follow those relative to those kinds of questions, though I don't know that every one of those questions was adequately addressed.
Amazing that they want this done for the whole state in one year. The warehouse of data, and you said that, you know, the child transfers to a new school and so forth. What's protecting the child's privacy that someone else couldn't get in there and hack into there and get the information?
Are they going to be number-coded, maybe?
They're going to be coded by student number, yes. But as far as what's guaranteeing their privacy, I would say nothing other than firewalls and other protections that they believe they have established for it. But again, the system has not been coordinated yet. But they want there to be freedom of information, but also protection of information. It's kind of an interesting dichotomy.
Well, I guess the main concern that I would have is people being able to go in and get the information or manipulate the information that's in there. So on the gain sharing, you're paying out for this past year for teachers this fall?
Right. In the fall, we'll make payments for this past year, 11-12.
Okay. It just seems like we're paying out one year early, doesn't it, or not? I mean, it just.
No, the goals were established at the, before the beginning of the school year last year.
Okay.
And so they had all year to work on those goals and they were, the principals developed the goals, in most cases with their staffs, their school leadership teams. And they, and it depends on how the school leadership team handled it and how much, how extensively the rest of the faculty was involved in that. But they were given those opportunities. The Race to the Top team looked over those goals and had some changes, suggestions for those teams. But this is reflective of this current school, or this just now concluding school year's work.
Okay. How many years are teachers mentored? You were talking, it's in, like you're going up to five years of mentoring?
Four years.
Four years of mentoring?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Okay. I think that's all of my questions. Let me just make sure of this. Oh, that was, on your report card?
Yes.
Okay. I'm trying to understand, you know, how it's done. And I see As across here, but yet.
Yeah.
The grading key doesn't show A.
It was just a filler. Mr. Barkowski was putting this together and he was just showing that.
Okay. Okay. So they would actually have EMP or I.
That's right.
Except in upper grades.
Right.
That's right.
I guess the teacher could make the comments, because my concern is that some parents aren't going to understand what is meant by some of these. And I know that when the standards first came out, that my concern was, how do parents understand what's there? And that particular presentation that I went to, they said, "Oh, we explained it at conference time." But knowing our conference attendance, I'm just concerned that there's going to be some people that aren't going to understand what some of these things mean.
No, I think that was the effort and the description of the grading key. And I understand what you're asking, Mrs. Van Hope. We will still have some who will not understand what it is, but I think better than just leaving EMP and I as the descriptors, to say that exceeds achievement of the grade-level standards, masters, and applied skills independently in most academic situations produces exceptional work is far better than merely saying exceeds. There's at least a half a chance.
Right. Oh, no, no. I understand that. I'm talking about the actual, each skill, or standard that you're doing right.
Okay.
I just don't think that a first-time kindergarten parent especially is going to understand everything that you're talking about here as far as what they want. And it certainly does demonstrate, this particular report card being for kindergarten, does demonstrate how tough kindergarten is now, that people don't realize what students in kindergarten are expected to know. And, you know, I keep telling people, it's not what you think. It's not playtime anymore. It is actual first-grade work now being done in kindergarten, or at least some of it is. It is actual first-grade work now being done in kindergarten, or at least some of it is. So I guess that, those were my main concerns. I don't know if, I guess I'm, somehow, we need to have an indicator, whether you tell me it's, the teachers would automatically do it under comments, but some indicator that's, or comment in here that should the child continue on this developmental track, they will not be ready for the next grade level, you know, type of thing. I mean, now that they're talking about this third-grade guarantee, parents need to know at kindergarten, okay, your child's missing so many that should this track continue and he's only, you know, not learning what others are down the road, he's going to have a problem.
Yeah, typically, how we address that, and this is a kindergarten, I just spoke, I said first grade, but this is kindergarten.
I suppose it's first grade.
I know, it's just the name, this was just a sample that Mr. Barkowski put together. But we send out a sort of a warning letter to parents around January, beginning of February, to say that your child is in danger of not passing, that he or she hasn't met the standards, and usually a conference is requested at that time, and it's so, it's a heads-up. And I will tell you, a lot of parents respond to those letters. You get lots of phone calls saying, you know, why is this, you know, what can I do to help? And then another letter does go out again a couple months later, and there's actually a final letters thing, you know, if the child is going to be retained. But in the meantime, there are meetings, intervention assistance team may aid in that decision if it's looking at retaining a child. So that's more so how we handle it as opposed to, you know, something on here. But the teacher does have these homeroom, one thing that's changed a lot of these homeroom teacher comments that have changed from in the past, whereas the teachers can just write general comments, prior to this, there were just lines going across, and you can write one comment for each thing, which was quite excessive, I think. And so the teachers requested that they just be able to sort of free, reform their thoughts, let it just flow from quarter to quarter, and the comments will remain. So if it's third quarter, the parent will see first-quarter comments, second-quarter comments, as well as third. So that was a big revision. And in there, they, the teacher could put those kinds of comments.
Well, I like the report card. I think it is, I think it's pretty thorough, and I think that it addresses things that, you know, are pretty concrete, and I like it. And I think that the majority of the vocabulary will probably be addressed during homework. You know, when they send work home, they'll know that they have to study, you know.
Blends or.
Yeah, the blends or, what was the one I was looking at?
Segments or shapes?
Yeah, decoding and that kind of thing. So I think, I think I like that a lot. I have a question about the MyAtlas and the, also the MAPS. How is that going to work with us, you know, with our curriculum, with our reading street, with our everyday math?
They're very, they're.
They're very well aligned to it?
They're customized, and you can plug in whatever your curriculum is.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Or materials, textbooks that you use, you can map, that's the beauty of it, you can put in whatever it is that you're using.
Okay.
Not so much MAP, that's the, that's the MyAtlas. MAP is an assessment for high schoolers that we use.
Okay. Okay, good. I wondered how that fit together with everything that's going on. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I have one. Regarding the teacher educator, resident educator, is it the reason they're going to the four years, is that ways prevent, like, the teacher leaving the district, or is four-year mentoring, or is it just to keep him off a plan of assistance? I mean, I'm just trying to figure what the reason is of going to four years down where we've only been doing like one or two years.
Yeah, I think my own opinion is that they're sort of modeling, this model is similar to that of medical rounds or medical, the medical profession, whereas they have a residency, I should say. And so this notion of four years and more support, and it's, you can change districts at any time, so it's not to keep anyone in one place. There's a resident educator license, whereas before it was a provisional, or, you know, your first, your first license that you obtain is a two-year, but now it's a four-year resident educator license, and then they move into the professional, which is five, and then they keep renewing five years. So it's more so, I think, to add support for teachers beginning.
So you're not necessarily a first-year teacher in our district, is a first-year teacher out of college this year?
That's right, it could be anywhere, right.
Okay.
So, yeah, a person that you're going to see tonight has a lot of experience elsewhere, but, so she won't have to go through that resident educator program here.
So if they do one year someplace else, then we do use.
Three years.
Do two, three, and four?
That's right.
Do we get the information from year one?
Yes, when I was talking about the end-of-year reporting, when I go in, I can see whoever, I can, all of ours are collected in a database, and we'll have access to all teachers. So if a teacher leaves us and goes, that person who hires them, will see that they've completed year one and vice versa.
And comments and so forth? Or no?
It's more so just a checkoff.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, that was an awful lot of work that we had to do, and so thank you for your leadership in this.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see where we are. Okay, and then we'll go on to financial data, and that would be Mr. Vasik, our treasurer.
Thank you. Item six is a resolution approved, to approve financial data as submitted to the board and recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mrs. Lizey. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. And item seven is a resolution to amend appropriations and approve advances as listed, and this is the last for this fiscal year to clean things up as we close out, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments? I did notice that we don't have the Rs in front of these, but they are regular items of business.
They are regular items, yes.
So people understand that we can go through these quickly because we know what they are. All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. The next ones are mine. Items eight, resolutions number eight through 11A are personnel-related, and Dr. Selkow will represent me in these matters.
Thank you. Item eight is a resolution considering certified staff for the 2011-2012 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion? So moved. By Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution considering the 2012 summer employment for the transportation staff, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments?
Just one question, transportation for the summer, I'm assuming, is to pick up students to attend summer school?
No, the transportation for summer is for extended school-year services for students with special needs. We have somewhere between 21 and 24 separate trips that are taken to various places all over the greater northern Ohio area for special needs children. Those who qualify for extended school-year services are those who have demonstrated regression when they have been away, like, for Easter break or winter break, and they, then there's proof that they would regress during summer months from what they have accomplished.
These are typically elementary school students, or can they be middle and high school?
No, they can be middle and high school students as well, but typically, it's elementary.
Okay. So we now have the answer why we see school buses on our streets, because people keep, people always ask.
That's the question I've been getting.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 10 is a resolution considering the certified staff for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments?
Just one question, transportation for the summer, I'm assuming, is to pick up students to attend summer school?
No, the transportation for summer is for extended school-year services for students with special needs. We have somewhere between 21 and 24 separate trips that are taken to various places all over the greater northern Ohio area for special needs children. Those who qualify for extended school-year services are those who have demonstrated regression when they have been away, like, for Easter break or winter break, and they, then there's proof that they would regress during summer months from what they have accomplished.
These are typically elementary school students, or can they be middle and high school?
No, they can be middle and high school students as well, but typically, it's elementary.
Okay. So we now have the answer why we see school buses on our streets, because people keep, people always ask.
That's the question I've been getting.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 10 is a resolution considering the certified staff for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item 11A is a resolution considering the classified staff program reductions and additions for the 2012-2013 school year, and I recommend approval, please.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Item number 12 is a resolution considering contracts for general liability, property and fleet insurance, and I would recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second?
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis.
As the board may recall, we pulled this portion of the agenda, the resolution from the agenda last meeting, because we didn't, we had not yet negotiated the rates, but they have been negotiated satisfactorily, and we are recommending approval. This is through, for general liability insurance, property insurance, and fleet insurance from Todd Associates Incorporated.
And it's a one-year contract?
Yes.
How much of an increase do we have?
Pat, do you have that figure about how much of an increase it is?
I don't.
No, we will get that to the board.
Okay. And have they made some determination on the value of the new buildings?
That is another good question. They would have to use whatever, yes, they have not at this point.
Okay, so I'm assuming then they would have to use what we say they're worth?
Well, it's like a new car.
I mean, you know.
We have a price tag.
Right, so, okay.
Than an assessment, actually.
Okay. And what is TRIA insurance? I've forgotten that one.
TRIA insurance?
It's under general liability, and then it says TRIA in inland marine, and I remember one time we had the question about inland marine, so now the TRIA, I don't know.
We will get these answers for you, Mrs. Van Hope.
Yeah, I just, you know, those are a couple of things that I noticed that I didn't recall before. Believe it or not, at one time, we used to be what was considered self-insured, and that was a long time ago, and in this day of litigation, we need the insurance. It's a lot of money, but we need it, we do. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lizey.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Hope.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Our next item is a facilities update.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to bring you up to date. We've had a lot of things happen on the sites in the last month, some exciting things, starting to look like a school out there, so we'll take a little run through them and show you what's going on. As we always start with the vision of Arbor, now we see some real progress. We've had all the, the grading has all been done in the front, the sidewalks are in, preparing to pave the drives, and almost all of the exterior work, the canopy here is starting to finish up, there's a little bit of detailing to be done, but pretty much the exterior is complete. Again, the front entry, last time, the curtain wall was not complete, that is done, now we're getting that canopy lip finished, the doors, the final doors, we don't want to put those on yet because material's going in and out, we'll do a job on those glass doors, so we'll hold off on those for a little bit. Moving to the east side, you see the completion of the administration and media center protrusion on the front of the building, and a beautiful day out there today for taking pictures. Getting some of the details taken care of, the exterior lighting, security cameras, speakers on the outside of the building are all being installed. The playground is beginning to go in at Arbor. And we're turning the courtyard into a prairie. But all the detailing is complete around the, around that courtyard.
It's okay, the deer can't get in there, so.
There you go. So a month ago, this is what the front entry looked like, standing in the front doors, looking in. And today, the terrazzo is now in place, has not been ground and sealed in the front lobby yet, but you see the trees in the front lobby, we're starting to detail out that I've forgotten that one.
TRIA insurance?
It's under general liability, and then it says TRIA in inland marine, and I remember one time we had the question about inland marine, so now the TRIA, I don't know.
We will get these answers for you, Mrs. Van Ho.
Yeah, I just, you know, those are a couple of things that I noticed that I didn't recall before. Believe it or not, at one time, we used to be what was considered self-insured, and that was a long time ago, and in this day of litigation, we need the insurance. It's a lot of money, but we need it, we do. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. DeAngelis.
Yes.
Mrs. Lysy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Sudar.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Ho.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Our next item is a facilities update.
Okay, appreciate the opportunity to bring you up to date. We've had a lot of things happen on the sites in the last month, some exciting things. Starting to look like a school out there, so we'll take a little run through them and show you what's going on. As we always start with the vision of Arbor. Now we see some real progress. We've had all the, the grading has all been done in the front, the sidewalks are in, preparing to pave the drives, and almost all of the exterior work, the canopy here is starting to finish up, there's a little bit of detailing to be done, but pretty much the exterior is complete. Again, the front entry, last time, the curtain wall was not complete, that is done, now we're getting that canopy lip finished, the doors, the final doors, we don't want to put those on yet, because material's going in and out, we'll do a job on those glass doors, so we'll hold off on those for a little bit. Moving to the east side, you see the completion of the administration and media center protrusion on the front of the building, and a beautiful day out there today for taking pictures. Getting some of the details taken care of, the exterior lighting, security cameras, speakers on the outside of the building are all being installed. The playground is beginning to go in at Arbor. But all the detailing is complete around the, around that courtyard.
It's okay, the deer can't get in there, so.
There you go. So a month ago, this is what the front entry looked like, standing in the front doors looking in. And today, the terrazzo is now in place, has not been ground and sealed in the front lobby yet, but you see the trees in the front lobby, we're starting to detail out that ceiling treatment, and we've really come a long way in the lobby. Another view of it from coming down the stairs, with the corridor going back to the gymnasium and the kindergarten wing. There'll be graphics on these walls, again, of trees, those are coming as we move towards completion. A month ago, the corridor going back to the kindergarten, and today, in living color. And the gentleman in the center is sealing the terrazzo down that corridor. Last month, we had the formwork for the apple, and this month, the apples are in place. The upstairs corridor, the tile is not down yet, but you can start to see the finishes in there that, that was a month ago, I'm sorry, this was the kindergarten corridor, a month ago, and the kindergarten corridor today. Casework being installed in the classrooms, these are the cubbies. On the other side of the room, the, this is in the kindergarten, the toilet room, and then the casework around there, this is low for the kindergarten students. The teacher workstation in the opposite corner, and you can see all the lights are in and functional. In this room, the shades are turned up, so you're not getting as much natural light in. This is the entrance to the media center, getting more complete, and then inside the media center, it's really starting to take shape with the lights being installed, and it's a great space. And that's Arbor, any questions?
What is the purpose of the gap between the sidewalk and the road?
Oh, that was, that was, that was a temporary road that was put in during construction, and they cut that open to make room for the formwork for the curbs.
Okay.
And that'll be filled in with stone and asphalt. Some space in there to get the formwork for them.
Okay. I didn't know if there's drainage that could go in there.
The speakers on the outside, is that an audio speaker, or is it a bells, for bells or what?
Both.
Both, okay. We were trying to guess that one, so, okay. And this school will be ready by?
I will defer to Pat on that one, what's the current date?
End of July, okay.
Moving on to Chardon Hills, again, the exterior, getting very close, we've still got some work on the canopies over the media center and the front door, but everything else is in very good shape there. Again, the security cameras, the lights, everything is installed on the outside. Coming up close now, you really, with all the brick clean, you get the full sense of that texture that we added in and the banding. We feel it's been really successful on this, on this job, it's got a really nice feel to it. And then coming inside the front door, the workers are putting the additional color onto the blue terrazzo right now, but they're in very good shape there. And this is the front lobby. And moving off the stairway up to the, to the media center, is a really great space with a lot of natural, this is all natural light flooding into that space, and providing a really nice ascent up to the, to the media center. The cafeteria, the acoustic clouds are all, are all framed in, most of the tiles are in. This is the art room, I don't think we've had a view of the art room as yet. On the north side of the building, to get that north light into the room, kiln room here, a lot of storage, there's also an arts, art material storage room off this side of the frame. The cubbies here in, in Chardon Hills, we used a wood tone on the cubbies, and we used color at Arbor, a little different treatment on each other.
Yes.
Aren't the upper, I thought there was a mixture at Chardon Hills when we were there, there were some colors?
The kindergarten does have, kindergarten classrooms do have color.
I remember seeing both, and I was like.
Then a month ago, this is the eastern stair, at the bottom of the eastern stair, you can see they started to frame out for the terrazzo, and today, terrazzo is in, and the colors in the walls. Feeling really excited about the way that's come out. And this is at that knuckle halfway back, the flow of the terrazzo takes you around the corner into the, to the toilet rooms, which are here. The media center on the second floor, looking out, you can see the pool across the way.
But they'll be busy reading, so they won't see that.
No, there won't be water.
There won't be water.
We started.
By then.
We threw a grand total of two people in the pool today.
Yeah, it was a little chilly. Yeah, the day, last Friday, there were a lot more, and we wanted to join them.
And this is the corridor going down to the bus drop-off area, this, the terrazzo has not been ground here yet, so it's got kind of a dull look to it. In the toilet rooms, this was that treatment with the sinks, where they can be observed by, kind of in a unisex fashion, if you will, and we think that's come out very well, we like the way that the tile and the floors worked out, of course, we don't have toilet partitions in yet, but. And some, somebody asked the last meeting about the water heater. Here is the water heater.
And how big?
It's a big one.
Do we ever find out how big it was?
That is several hundred gallons.
Wow, okay.
It's a, it, you can't really get a scale of that, but that's about seven foot tall. Any questions about Chardon Hills?
I mean, Chardon Hills will be ready. Same, at the end of July. Did we, did we move back a little bit? I thought it was mid-July originally before.
It was, Chardon Hills will be about the 20th, so Chardon Hills will probably be a week ahead of time from Roosevelt.
Arbor.
But we're actually just trying to get to Pat and the rest of the team, area by area, turn over dates, so that they can start voting for furnishings and stuff early.
Okay. Does that change anything on anyone's liability or anything like that, if we move things in before it's official?
What type of liability?
Any liability. Liability of the equipment you're leaving there, or liability of the people putting this stuff in?
Well, I don't, I wouldn't be the one to ask as far as your liability for your own possessions. When we turn over an area, it would already be documented in terms of punch list items that still need to be complete, so in that case, there are snapshots taken of before we turn over an area.
And doors would be installed by then?
Yeah.
And everything would be secure?
Yeah.
Okay. They both looked really great, Dr. Jones and I walked through on Friday, and, you know, it still looks like an awful lot of work to be done in approximately one month, but I'm trusting that you know what you're talking about on your scheduling, so, you know, it will get done.
We're very pleased with the way they've turned out.
They have, they do look very nice, and I think that.
I think the quality of the work has been excellent, too.
And when you're saying the end of July, like for Arbor, that means old building down, school two, or just the new school ready to go?
New school ready to go.
No, new school ready to go, the demolition's going to start soon.
There'll be a playground up and everything for school at Arbor?
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't know if there's other places.
At Arbor, it's being installed already.
As a general rule, there is some components to the site work at every site, where the old building is still in the way, so there, we'll be pushing to get as much of that done, you know, by Thursday at school, but those dates are.
School's usable?
Yes.
Do you use sod or grass seed? Is it sod or grass seed? It's seed, so then are you waiting to seed until the fall?
Yes.
Okay.
If we tried to seed right now, there's no way.
Right, right. It'd take a lot of water. I was just wondering when. No, we depend on, the one from up above, but he hasn't been doing a good job this year. He made, he gave it to us all last year instead. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Rob's going to present the other two buildings. Great, thank you. Just a reminder, I think you know the floor plan by now, we're at Bluestone, and last month, we showed you on the outside, down here and up at the top is the end of last week, you can see the roofs, shingles are on, they are finishing up the trim there. I'll just march around the building again, as I've done in the past, you can see a lot of work done here with the roofing and the trim, and the window mullions here as opposed to last month. So a lot happening on the building. This is in May, and this is the end of last week, you can see the sidewalk here, the trim coming up, and that's, Mr. Clickinger, retiring, I think. Again, you can see the, the trim being installed, you've got the roof up there as compared to last month, let's see. Pretty much the same in the gym area and receiving area, except for this driveway here is now cut in at the curve there. Going inside, you have all the striping and finishes and the ceiling grid in. That's a look up at the ceiling, you can see the two-by-two grids, and they're starting to lay the acoustical tile in there. This is the cafeteria, cafeteria, you can see the acoustical clouds there, they're finishing those up, and they've painted, but they're putting the banding on here currently. Again, one of the classrooms, you've got the lighting up, ceiling grid, and wrapping that up. Just thought I'd show you a finished area, this is on the second floor, the classroom wing toward the end, there's a stairwell going down here, but you can get a good feel of what the finished ceiling and lighting and striping is going to look like there. You have the media center with the grid up again in the ceiling, and there's glass in these areas here, the painting is finished. I just got a series of terrazzo photos, here's them kind of laying it out and putting the trim in there to receive it. Here's some of the guys, you can see the red and blue squares, this is the field work that they're doing now, and here's some finished area that they cleaned up so we could take a picture of it, with the red and the blue marching down the corridor, and the field there. Any questions?
What's our expected date for that one, Bluestone?
That is, that's going to be right on the day, that's going to be very end of August.
So we've actually moved, gained some more time then?
We have gained some time, but I can get into that in my section.
Looking at Shoreview, again, the plan's pretty familiar to everyone, and you can see that in May, there was a lot of trim that wasn't there, window mullions weren't complete, and as you can see now, all that is, has been done. You can start to see things, as Mike was saying, cameras coming up on the outside, and a lot of, a lot of trim work done here, they've really come a long way on this exterior of this building. This was last month in the cafeteria there, and you can see this month, you have security cameras, the roof, the trim, window trims, all, all complete there now. You can see the, coming down by the, this is the gym back here, coming down the side of the building there, you can see the grading taking place. See the fencing's gone, and a lot of movement of the earth to finish grading back there. You can see in May, you know, in that two-story entry, that now you've got all the trim and gutters, actually, the gutters are moving around the building, being installed. Again, you've got lighting, security cameras, and this is the base for the playground back there. Again, in May, looking down, you can see that all that trim and, and is complete, and the gutters are in, and they're grading, finish grading that area there. Back in May, this was the, the front of the two-story classroom wing, and you can see they've come a long way there, it's all finished here, all the window mullions, trim and gutters. Just looking inside, you can see all the lighting in the main entrance lobby, as you go up the stairs there, putting in the ceiling tile, all the painting is done. This building, all the clouds are installed there, waiting for the tile to go in, it's painted, the striping is here in this building. Washing area, three-compartments sink, all these are installed and hooked up, and your ovens and your hoods, so a lot of, a lot of kitchen equipment going in. And then, these are all the sinks that are going in the cabinetry in the classrooms, but you can see they've already got their bubblers and faucets on them, ready to go. And again, this is a classroom, you can see all the lighting's in, just waiting for the ceiling tile there to be finished up. Also, I wanted to show you, I'm going to show you this area in terms of the terrazzo in the building, this is that secondary entrance, your cafeteria and your gym. So you can see here, they're laying that out there, you can see the pattern going down the corridor, and they've got that other color to put in there on the edge, but as Mike said, the terrazzo's looking really, they're doing a great job on the terrazzo, it's really nice. I just had a couple of slides, I know Kenneth talked about, there was still a decision to look at in terms of the stamped concrete at this building, and so I just wanted to brief you a little bit, remind you what we were talking about, so I have a couple of slides on that. This is the plaza, and what we were talking about is creating a pattern here in the concrete of, I guess it's easiest to just show you here, in the three-dimensional. You can see we create a colored trim out of the stamped concrete, and then you'd have these field areas in the middle. This is.
Are the fields smooth, or are those also stamped?
They're actually, you have a stamped look of brick, and then you have a flatter, more stone look. I pulled off a picture of some other project, and you can sort of see how, how that would look. The stripes here, though, would be your brick pattern, and the field would look very similar to this, we've got some control joints shown in it, but that's basically the type of look that we have. Now, going back to that, here, we do not have the stamped concrete, we really used it to define the plaza, if you didn't do it, it would just look like these areas here. But at this building, you know, we felt it was important, because it's such a pedestrian type of, of building, this plaza was extremely important, so defining that in the stamped concrete, we thought was effective. Any questions on that?
Do you remember the cost of the stamped concrete?
Forty-three thousand dollars.
So that's, it's additional beyond what the regular concrete would be.
That's, at the time it was bid. Correct. It could go up or down. Yeah, I think there was a 60-day election period of bid, but we could see if there was any change, plus or minus, labor wouldn't change, I would think, but maybe if the, we were always in a four at this time of year, so that shouldn't really, you know, the wage sale change over calendar year, that should affect it at all. So it's really just if the material has gone up.
So forty-three thousand, plus or minus a little bit?
Yes.
And that's out of our contingency fund?
Yes, which I'll be writing an update for.
Okay, that might be a good thing.
And then the other alternate that we. And then the other alternate that we were looking at, that we've held in reserve is at Arbor. And that is the, the streetscape at 200th Street. That's this area in here. And I'll have a blow up of that. So what we're talking about in the base bid, we have the sidewalk, straight sidewalk through here, and the mounding was always in the base bid. But what we did as an alternate was this, this area in here, where the, and that's these crescent shapes here, which would provide a little scalloped edge to that mound with some seating areas off the, the main circulation path of the sidewalk to create some interest along there. And then there'd be a low wall here, go back to the section, a low wall that defines that, that edge. And then as you can't come over the top, now this half of the mound, the mound portion of it and, and the landscaping on top of it was in the base bid. But we've made a soft slope on the, on the backside, which provides spectator seating for the, for the fields. But then this area between the sidewalk and the, and the top of the mound is what we're talking about in the alternate.
And that's what the, the Architectural Review Board wanted us to do here from the city?
And the alternate-
I got my numbers mixed up.
Okay.
That one's forty-six thousand dollars, forty-seven thousand dollars. The stamped concrete is twenty-three.
Oh, okay. That's a whole lot, sounds a whole lot better.
That's a lot, yeah, that's a lot more value.
On the, so this is for Arbor. On this, is it possible to do only part of that? You know, like do the little wall that you need there or do the? I guess that would be, probably be the main thing that you would do, is either the wall or the concrete below it? And leave out at this time benches and extra trees or whatever?
Actually, I think, we're showing benches in this, but I think the way we ended up bidding it, that the low wall is seat height, so that it's actually a seat without separate benches.
Okay. So the alternate is to put the low wall in and the extra concrete?
And then the extensions of the concrete off the sidewalk. So the, the line here, I'm not doing that very straight.
Right.
Had too much caffeine today. The line of the, the six wide sidewalk is, is already in, but it's these crescent shaped pieces of concrete and then the wall. That is, that is not-
Okay, now in the base bid, though, it does have that undulating line to the hill.
Right, the, the, yeah, the mound just undulates.
Right, so what would be in those places where the concrete is?
Grass.
Just grass?
Yeah.
Okay, so our choice is grass or concrete? And that's what we're paying the forty-six thousand for?
And the wall.
And the wall.
And the wall. Yeah, seating, there's a seating component.
Wall's most of the money.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I would imagine.
But that's what Architectural Review Board wanted, right? They wanted us to do it. And we kind of, because I wasn't on the board then, so the agreement was made to do it? Or was it?
It was strong, they were kind of like strongly encouraging. They wanted a lot of things, Kathy.
Oh, I understand.
They wanted a lot more lighting, they wanted decorative lighting, they, you know, there was a lot of things that they wanted. We just didn't have the budget for it.
Right, you don't always get what you want, but we also got to be in good faith.
This was in their approval. We told them after the fact that we didn't have the money to do it. And then they asked us to try to do it. And we told them it would be an alternate, so.
But the, I'm sorry, the wall, you, you said, is it kind of seat level height?
Yes. Yeah, so, let me hear. Might be better off going. I was having trouble finding these drawings today. But the wall would actually sit about here and the mound would come down to the top of the wall and there'd, there'd be a seating element, yeah, seat level height, like about eighteen inches. And then that would make the inside of that crescent, yes.
What, what would prevent the top of the mound going over the wall? I mean, is there?
Well, we're putting it at an angle.
Okay.
And then you put grass on it, you know, the grass will-
Will root it and hold it in, okay.
Is the wall then purely decorative? It has no function with respect to retaining the mound at this point?
Yeah, behind it.
So it would be a positive addition to the-
That's, yeah, I think that maybe we should look at our contingency with, could we implement doing this plan if we had contingency money remaining? Because I think it would be worthwhile in terms of having some retention there, especially if we're going to do the mound for spectator on the other side.
Well, my other question was, is it something that can be done after the fact if we don't have the contingency money? Is it something that our people would be, be qualified to do?
I don't think you would do it with your own forces. One of the reasons we held it to this point was that we're at a position right now where the site work contractor is going to start his work and he's on the site. So there would be some cost advantage in doing it while the site work contractor is doing his final site work. If you did it later down the line and came back, the re-mobilization costs and those kind of things would, would drive it up.
Well, I, I feel compelled to also say, right now it's co-funded. Later on, it won't be.
Okay. That says a lot. Okay.
I mean, it's from walking-
I think we need to hear from you.
Dennis isn't here tonight.
Yeah.
I was going to say that, but.
I looked around.
Well, what we, we need to hear from you then is how the contingency budget is doing to know if we, what we can afford.
What a segue. I think it's your turn.
Is that, is the wall brick? Is that, what is the wall made of?
Well, I think Ms. Sutard had a question first.
The wall is made out of?
The wall's made out of concrete.
Concrete, not brick, okay.
Is the, so this cost is forty-six-ish? And you said most of the cost is the wall?
Yes.
So if we were to remove the benches and the concrete from that, is that?
Well, I think that-
The benches are already gone?
No, there are no benches. The benches came out.
In the alternate. So the way that the, this went through many variations, as I'm told, and the, the final alternate price that was secured was for a wall that had a seating cap on it. And so the benches were, you're not, so they are not there.
Okay, so if we were, so the fact that we've got a bench in this drawing and in the one previous, the, can you go back one? When I see the, you know, again, with my, with my non-laser pointer, the, the kind of rectangle things, yeah.
Yeah, those, those indicate benches. And I didn't, wasn't aware we were going to discuss this till this afternoon, so I was scrambling to find some drawings of it. This is not the final iteration of those drawings.
Okay, so, but this is, with the, with the removal of the benches, is this kind of the final?
Yes.
Because the, the concrete still bubbles out and we still have the wall.
The precipice is still a serpentine wall.
Okay.
Yeah, basically, the walls start like here and here and then follow around to there and then start again there.
Okay.
So it's only on the indentation part?
They kind of rise up from the ends and then have a flat surface in the middle.
Now-
And I don't think we ever did that version in color.
Okay, now, this is showing a lot of trees and bushes and such. Is that in the bidding too?
The trees are in the base bid, yeah, basically.
Okay, but the bushes in that, that you're showing, I'm assuming the smaller circles are bushes or something?
These?
Yeah.
Those are street trees, those are already there.
Oh, okay. Wow, I didn't think there were that many there.
So is there any savings if you just have great sidewalk grass and wall? Is there any significant?
No, I mean, this is a voluntary expense that you guys would be taking out additional expenses.
No, yeah.
But it's-
But what I'm saying is if you-
You have something that works and something that has been approved by the city, you know, that you've already bought. It's, it's if you want to improve, it's not what you already bought.
Yeah, I understand that. What I'm saying is if you just didn't have those, the curved portions of cement, would that decrease the cost significantly?
It would.
And just have grass?
Well, it would, except that you'd have to rebid it, you'd probably have to take it back to ARB.
Well, I, I think the, I mean, the walls are also wholly back in the soil, so it's-
Right.
When you, when you, when you put that wall in, the slope of the, of the mounding, it would need to continue further out to get an acceptable grade, so.
Let me hear.
Well, I'm not, I don't have any issues with the wall. I was just talking about the cement that you'd be putting your feet on as you sat on the wall.
Oh.
Yeah.
I, I, I see. You mean the flat one?
Yeah.
I mean, this, this piece here, getting grass instead of-
I just wondered if that would be an, you know, a-
Except cutting, mowing it, I would think, you know, it would be-
Yeah, there is a component of mowing it.
Yeah.
It'd be a little more of a challenge. Mr. Clickinger, you, you wanted to say something about this?
There's some brick trim in within, I can't remember if it's stamped concrete or brick trim.
I think it's brick. It's actual brick.
The wall or the?
No, in, in the-
In the flat.
Around the edge of it.
Would be a trever or a trim.
There's three little curved in sections on the ground is brick.
Oh, not cement?
Not cement.
Part of it, part of it is brick. It's not all, there's a brick edge on it.
Oh, okay.
And then cement going to the-
Gee, can we rescue some of the bricks from the school when they tear it down? No, I'm, you know, I think you've explained it a lot better than from what we understand. And so we have to make the decisions on these two this evening, as I understand.
No, I think they're next.
I would defer to, to Pat on that.
I was hearing this meeting.
We have, we used to have months and now we probably have about a week or so.
Oh, okay. Okay, we don't have another meeting.
It's not until the ninth.
Until the ninth of July and that'd be too late.
So Pat will talk a little bit about where we are with contingencies and maybe that'll help with the discussion.
Okay, so I guess you're up next, Pat.
Okay.
He didn't ask the questions, did you? I'm going to move in.
When's the move-in date for Shoreview?
Right now, we are tracking four days early, which is like August 15. Early is a relative term because contractually, they're supposed to be done July 31st. But given the challenges of the weather and some other issues, we've sort of been using the term early or late as it relates to your first day of school.
That's two weeks, we're doing good there.
Right. Well, just ask Glenn, I think he has a different, different impression. Well, I'll go through my package of information here. Again, as in months past, you know, we basically have two, two pairs. We have Charton Hills and Arbor, which are more or less the same in status and in current issues and in challenges and accomplishments. And then we have Bluestone, Shoreview, which have similar accomplishments and status and, and challenges. The, the big thing that has happened in the last month is actually this construction progress section we normally breeze over. But since our last meeting, we've bid all the remaining packages. So we now know at least base bid where we are. And we have good news to report on that. Starting at Charton Hills, the demolition and the abatement was already done, as you know. But at bid, bid package seven and eight, educational technology and then furniture, these are district-wide savings, but the educational technology came in in excess of $200,000 under budget. And then through additionally, working with the successful bidder Nettech out of Dublin, down at Columbus, we were able to make some substitutions, some of which were at their suggestion, that saved an additional $60,000. So in taking that $200,000 and the $60,000, we then took alternate one, which was for a Promethean smart board in every classroom. As you know, the OSFC standards are for four Promethean smart boards per school. So that was something that we were hopeful that in bid savings, we would be able to then upgrade. So that number was 236,000. So you basically come out getting the additional smart boards and still saving some money, $36,000 or so. Then on furniture, furniture went to three different contractors. There were individual bid items, each of them come in with their own specialty, whether it's art room furniture or it's student dining tables and chairs. Three different entities took the seven bid items and those came in approximately $200,000 under budget. So just while I'm on the bidding process, I'll just, you know, wrap up on the other bid item that just bid last week. And that is the demolition of Roosevelt, Upson and Thomas Jefferson, which came in $133,000 under budget. Across the package, yes. The good news for me is that we had three unique bidders at each, that were low at each school, which means I have a contractor's undivided attention at each location, which, given the short window for demolition, I'm glad that we have, so. But anyway, we'll drop back to Charton Hills and talk about some of the specifics, as you can see in the photos. And, and actually, this, this, I want to point out, this meeting is, has kind of shifted in the month gradually since I've been giving these presentations. It used to seem like we would make these presentations around the eighth or the ninth or the tenth of the month. So this percent complete, 86.2, was through the end of May. So we've had almost the whole month of June that we don't have the data for yet. So, you know, I would think that, given what a typical month is, that come July 1st, you know, Glenbrook should be somewhere around 92% complete, 93% complete, so.
Is that exclusive or inclusive of site work, that percentage?
That, that percentage includes site work, so, yeah. So the current issues at, at Charton Hills, we have to finish the cabinets, which the delivery had some pieces missing or came in different shipments. It came a little mishmash. So there's been some sorting that slowed us down a little bit on that. And as I alluded to, when we were talking about turnover, we'll be getting, well, Charton Hills will be the first school that we start turning over areas to Glenn and his team where they can start staging these rooms and getting ready. Not the least of which, so that Charton Hills is in his rearview mirror. And when we give him a school at the very last minute, like Thomas Jefferson, Bluestone, he has all of his team not distracted elsewhere. So getting that behind us so that he can have all hands on deck for the schools that come in on a tighter timeframe is important.
Is the, is the flooring in upstairs at Charton Hills?
No, and there, we do have some humidity issues with, with relative humidity in the concrete slab. We've brought in dehumidifiers to, there's a, there's a more sophisticated and admittedly more accurate way of measuring humidity in newer concrete nowadays. For 30 years, you did a calcium test. We performed the old test and we're actually, the maximum was like eight pounds per thousand square feet. We're only at three and a half or four. So the old test, we passed with flying colors. The new test, we're right on the border of the manufacturer's specifications. So we're doing everything we can to wait as long as we can to put in the VCT. We brought in these dehumidifiers to try and accelerate the process. So they're working, combined with the building system is started up, so the regular house AC is running. And we're just trying to dry it out as much as we can before we put the floor down. We won't let a point or two affect not delivering the school. We're just trying to narrow the gap as much as possible. And when it comes to VCT, it is largely- And when it comes to VCT, it is largely manpower-driven. Obviously, there's a limit to a number of bodies that you can have out there, but a guy, a person can do, a team of two gets about two classrooms a day. So, I mean, it's really just a math equation of how many people you need, given how much time you have left, so...
Because once the floor goes down, the furniture, the desks and tables go in the classroom, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, we do a wax and clay first, but yeah, yeah. The budget summary, the, the, the specific numbers here, construction contingency started at nine, excuse me, 797. We have approved change orders of 425, pending of 117,000, and a contingency remaining of 254. As I've mentioned in the past, these are transferable, school to school, so, you know, take it for what it's worth on each specific school. But if you really want a picture of how much contingency you have remaining, turn to the last page of the multi-project cost report, which is in the back of your package. Look at the grand total line, which is the bottom line, and go to the far right, 1.666 million left, and that is before we add in the savings for all the items that we just bid. So we basically say, through the bidding of furniture, technology, and demolition, and, and then that value engineering, we picked up about $600,000. Then you turned around and you spent 235 of that on the smart boards. So it's a net...
357,000, it's 357,000 now?
Yes, thank you.
So we're just about to...
Did you mention that there was also saving some, the abatement of this?
Uh, I don't think that there was. Amy's numbers were a little out of date. I don't know where she pulled them from, but when we originally started the project and reduced the amount of abatement, that money was actually used to balance the books on the base bid. So there was not, we did think for a second that we did pick up some money, but her note, the budget line she grabbed from was a little out, out of date.
So the 1.6 million, we add the 357 to it?
Correct. So you're basically at...
Two million.
Almost two million.
And $700,000 goes back...
Has to go back to our...
We have 1.3 million.
Mr. Higley.
Yes, we forget that.
Now we're spending a little bit of the money.
We got some 3 million left, yeah.
Okay, now, is there, are there things that...
Everything we, go on, I'm sorry.
Okay, are there things that may come up, once we are occupying the building, that we may find we need to add, and can we use the contingency money to do that?
From a co-funding standpoint, I don't know that answer. I don't know when the project is closed, and therefore the state dollars are closed. Do you know, Steve? I, I don't know.
With the contingency, I think the thing to keep in mind is that there are some claims that are still on potential in the million dollar range, so that's a negotiated by infinity. So, so you lose that one point, we should plan on losing that 1.7, 700,000 of district money, in addition to the possible potential claims of a million dollars. And then there are some soil issues that we're having.
Yeah, I mean, the, the question was, once you're in the space, if you, once you kind of feel your way around in there and decide you, you might want to add something.
That's just all locally.
Well, yeah, but I think Mr. Higley asked the question that we were trying to get to.
Yeah. The, if the question is, are there still things that could happen? The answer is yes. It happened today. It cost $13,000. The soils for the driveway at Upson failed their proof roll, which is like the stability of the soil to hold up the pavement, so it doesn't crack. And you're never going to know that until the day you put it down, and that happened today. So that's just one example. Now, the frequency of those things and the magnitude of those things has, you know, greatly slowed, because there really just aren't that many unknowns left. I mean, we're almost done with the project. So for the most part, things have been flushed out. You know, we, we're typically getting, you know, two or three items pop up in a week, where a couple of months ago, it was probably two or three a day.
Okay, I guess I'm still trying to get this, a handle on the money that's available.
Yes.
Okay, and if we're talking the million dollars that we need to set aside for potential claims, and the 700,000 that has to come back, that we loaned to the project from our permanent improvement fund, and, and has to come back to that, okay, we're really using up almost everything that you just told us we gained and, and everything.
Yes, I, I believe the difference of opinion would be that when the pro, when the project started, at least as it was explained to me and the OSFC's impression, that 700,000 was to be spent on the project, it wasn't a placeholder that would come back to you.
No.
No, that was never what we said.
If it was necessary, it would not come back to us, was the...
Oh, I understand that, yes, it has to be needed, otherwise it does come back to you. But the feeling at the time was that it would be needed.
Well, or they would not have asked us to contribute.
Right.
But I think it was more a placeholder, actually. That was the impression that I had.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we were kind of under the impression that that 700,000 comes back.
I believe at the time, the facilities commission was not comfortable with where the contingency was. They essentially wanted us to increase the contingency by 700,000.
Correct, yeah. So this was a backstop, right?
Correct.
Which we need back.
But the thing was, we knew, we knew that our current improvement fund needs that 700,000. So I guess that's where, so I'm, I'm trying to get a grasp on, do we have any money left to do these alternates that they were discussing?
Well, part of that is, I mean, gets into a fairly subjective and very detailed discussion on the validity of these claims that are in. There's a wide range of opinions as to entitlement, from the full thing, the full amount, to nothing at all, depending on who you ask.
Well, can, to just to chase that down with some of the numbers that, that you've provided, and Mr. Higley, if you could chime in, Mr. Klickinger, if you could chime in, architects, if you could chime in. I mean, if it's, I mean, we're, we've got a $2 million contingency with the 1.6 plus the 357 that we've added, and I've heard $1 million in claims, and I've heard $700,000 in permanent improvement money. That leaves 300,000, and we've heard price tags of 46,000 and 23,000.
There's also dehumidification, the soils, you know, we're going to have to put some premium entitlement for weekends, so that has to be back in it, back to them as well.
Mr. Higley, it sounds like you're suggesting that we don't spend the money on the alternates.
No, I don't know. And I know we have to tell them within the week, but, well, I'd sure like to. We have to get a better feel, I think, and we have to press infinity a little bit.
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the infinity claim is in two levels of severity, I guess, for lack of a better term. We have their documentation for Roosevelt and Glenbrook. It is 250,000, give or take, and we don't see a whole lot of entitlement at all. We don't have the, the package yet for Shoreview, Bluestone.
Wouldn't those, since those were behind and they're catching up, is that, should we assume that it would be more than the 250?
Yeah, that's, I mean, the, we've had informal discussions in the tune of, you know, 700, 800,000, that's how we get to the million dollar number. But what they're claiming, we don't know, because they haven't submitted their claim yet. I do know a large portion of their claim is based in a claim that they've received from their subcontractor as it relates to structural steel.
Can, can I ask you a question about the, the Serpentine wall project and the stamped concrete? Thank you very much. Are those co-funded also?
Yes.
If we go ahead and do them, they're co-funded?
Yes.
So that figure is for the LFI portion of, of it, or is it the whole?
No, it's for the, it's, it's for the total amount, of which LFI is 6.1% of it, and then the, and then of the co, and then the balance is 60, 40.
So the total then, give or take, you know, $75,000 or whatever it is, is...
It's basically 67%.
Our cost was 47, 48%.
Forty, forty, right, yeah, you're in the 40.
No, you know, we're the...
The state is there. The state's 41.
Yeah, but the total is 41.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. $41,000.
41%.
No.
No, that's the state.
You're in the 60.
I'm sorry, 59%.
Right.
Plus another 6.1%.
So, but Steve, so did you flush out the numbers on that? So again, like 60% of the 40, of the 75 total, give or take, again, in the $40,000?
I don't like your count.
Yeah, that would be about...
66%.
Okay, if we end up, and that we end up spending more than what we have, that means that our 700,000 doesn't come back to us.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, your, your $700,000 are the last dollars, if required, that you would spend. If, if there are $700,000 or an amount less left over at the end of the project, it goes to you exclusively and not to the OSFC.
Okay, now, let's say that there's, just for talking sake, let's say there's $300,000 left above that 700,000.
Yes.
Does that 3% get divided between the state and us, or does the state take it all?
Yes, it does. That 300,000 gets split for the ratios, yeah. And the OSFC is very interested in seeing their contingency dollars returned to them.
I bet they are. Tell them they should have ordered no rain last year, and we wouldn't, you know, it's sexy.
You know my policy, it stopped raining when I showed up here.
I know. But now we're not getting enough rain. The other way.
Last year was so bad, and it was still like, like, middle of September, but you can't go away. And we'll be ready to grow grass a little bit, all right.
So I'm still not getting a really good, firm handle on whether to spend this money or not tonight. And I'm wondering if we have to make the decision in a week? Does it have to be done by board resolution? Or can it be by directive?
Could be by change order.
Well, I mean, for my, internally for me, it would be done by change order, but...
Would you need a consensus?
Well, what I was going to say was, if the superintendent had the numbers and could share it individually with the board members and get a feel for what we think, without a formal vote, would you be able to make the decision?
Yes.
Okay.
So I've actually crunched some numbers, and with apologies to the LFI percentage, the 46 and the 23 equals $69,000, multiplied out by 59%, that's $40,710. Again, we have 2 million in contingency. I'm comfortable spending 40,000.
The 2 million, though, includes the OSFC portion of the contingency. Okay.
We also have to talk about the signs, potential signs.
How much are the...
Those are a lot of them.
What did you say?
And how many are there?
30. Okay, I couldn't, I didn't hear.
When can, when do we have to make that decision?
Well, it'd be 10,000, 40,000.
Oh, that's a lot better.
You could do those at any time. We've, we've roughed in power.
Well, we'll do the Chardon Hills one, because the Chardon Hills assistant principal is still here.
Okay. That along with all the other extras we put in.
In fact, let's just give her four signs.
Yeah, but she's got the geopiers.
She's got the geopiers, that's right.
Maybe they're underground, but they're there, and they're important.
Okay, so we still need 40,000 for the signs, and I would think we would want signs up as soon as possible, not waiting on those.
Question is, do you want them to be digital signs? And I think you do.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Because the ease of changing them is...
I agree.
It's so nice out at the corner. My second, my story, you can change them.
Ours wouldn't be as elaborate.
Yeah, ours wouldn't be as elaborate.
But still, it'd be changed easily.
A software upgrade at that point or not?
Well, you have to have the sign that we take the software.
Oh, okay.
Still, you can just have an electronic, not with all the fancy pictures, but you could say, you could change it and be done that day. School's getting out early today, or some, you know.
Yeah.
Don't forget the track meet tonight or something.
I think the signs are, are pretty critical for communication, and we know we're hurting in that area, so, especially without a newspaper.
Yeah.
I think we ought to have the signs, I don't think that's a...
Bridgette gives 40.
So I don't think that's a, I think we have to do them. So that's 40,000, and then we still have the other 70?
Pat, is that a, is that a direct? Do I have a price for that, or do, did you secure? So, okay, you're gonna...
I believe the signs are co-funded too, so...
The mason.
All right, can...
Are they, are they co-funded, the signs?
Yeah, they can be at this point.
Right, that's why we want to get them in.
What do these signs look like? Are they just...
They're...
A reader bro.
Four by six or eight, four foot high, six or eight feet long, with a frame.
That includes the frame, I believe. That's why you're, that's why you're struggling with the six, because it's, it's basically the size of a piece of plywood, that's what the outer dimensions are.
And there's a top piece with wood or something with school name in it as well.
And it's affixed to a base of some sort, right?
And three or four lines that are capable of rotating and stroking.
Okay. Yeah, and they're just pretty plain, as opposed to some of the ones that we have now that are pretty nice.
And that, that price was not meant to be animated, but I...
Well, that's okay, the city doesn't let us do animated ones.
And they look in amber and red.
So you can have red flashing, right?
So, one in the parking lot, and I, my recollection is that the time we thought the amber was better.
A little bit brighter.
Amber's easier on the eyes, too.
Yeah.
Okay, do you read?
All right, so that's 40,000 we need to do. I would suggest then to the board that we let Mr. Higley get some better numbers for us and communicate them through Dr. Jones, and we can communicate our feelings to him.
Regarding the boards or regarding the, all of the LFI?
All of the LFI.
All of them, but I think...
I think the signs we need to do.
I think the signs are critical. I think they're more critical than, I like the stamped concrete, because I think it will make that whole area look a lot better.
It's going to feel like a lot of concrete, obviously.
Right. My, so, I think my pri, my particular priority would be the signs first, the stamped concrete second, and the third would be the, the stuff for the wall.
I just don't think that we need to upset architectural review, because we have other projects coming down the road in five or 10 years.
But they know that we can't.
They know we can't afford, we can't afford everything, but what they asked about the Serpentine and all that kind of stuff, I just think that, you know, it sets a message and a tone that we're working together, that we're following what they suggested or asked. I mean, I know they wanted more things, we're not doing more, we're just doing what the initial one was, and that's, that's where I follow there.
But see, they want, I think the stamped concrete was one of their things, they wanted that to look like that, so that's also theirs.
But the stamped concrete gives it a little character.
Yeah, well, we've made a lot of changes to the buildings based on things that they've requested.
Your design professional.
ARB's approval was contingent on bringing the signs back.
So that we would have signs.
No, so they could see what they looked like.
Oh, oh, oh.
If and when we have signs.
You have to wait down till next month's meeting.
So they probably won't even be there anyway, by the first day of school. Not if you have to go to ARB.
Well, they don't have any meetings in July and August.
They're a break one.
So they're off in the summer, City South is in the summer, July and August.
Yeah, they don't look, can't approve until September. Yeah, it also can't approve until September.
Can I ask a question of Mr. Higley? Anything else? And I mean that, you know, quite seriously, I mean, we were aside from the signs and these other two projects that... The fourth item was flat-screen televisions in the lobbies of each of the schools. And that clearly can be added later.
Those are wired.
They're wired.
Yeah.
Flat-screen TV, you can get a nice one, like, 600 watts.
Check.
And software to go with that.
Okay. I think the only other item that we, you know, have in our back pocket is some selective, critical path overtime. That's something that we know isn't going to be zero. We try and keep it to a minimum.
Seems like we've spent our... Anything that we've saved already, then, plus our contingency, if we add all these things together.
Actually, I don't, you know, when I bring it up, I don't envision a very large number, but...
Which way? Plus or minus?
I'm talking about, specific to a possibility of overtime.
Oh, okay.
There's three main trades that will... Could, you know, we have an opportunity to pick up some time or, you know, provide a little more insurance at Shoreview, because right now, we're, you know, three days, I mean, a bad week could knock us right off track there. You know, that's not a lot of room for error with the amount of work that still needs to be done, so. But those would be flooring installation, cabinetry installation, and electricians. Each of those crews are about a range, but six to eight people. So when you bring them in on a Saturday, it's about $2,000, and we don't have that many Saturdays left, so.
I'd just like to say something else about the 200 Street addition. I think that that's going to be welcoming to the community. I... 200 Street is my through affair, you know, to get from freeway to my home. And even walking, it would be very, very nice.
Everything. I totally agree.
Right.
Okay, don't... Please don't misunderstand me. I totally agree that if we can, I'd like to see it done. But I think we need to prioritize where we can, you know, which things we need to have first. And, you know, I think the signs are critical, because we need that communication. You know, and then we go from there. But I think if we get some better numbers and you can communicate with us...
I'll pull the board.
Then you'll have a feel for what way to recommend, and we'll go from there. Did you have anything else?
No, I mean, you can look the package over. I'll just consolidate these, because they're mostly the same. But Chardon Hills and Arbor, you know, Tarazo is starting, is ending by the end of this week, definitely by the fourth. You know, they're going gangbusters at the other two schools. Electricians at Glenbrook are actually going to be done at the end of this week, other than one or two guys to just troubleshoot some stuff. And those guys, who know the system, are going to the other schools to supplement. So they're people that are familiar with the light fixtures, they're familiar with how the buildings are supposed to be wired, because they're essentially a lot of the same stuff. So there's no learning curve, and they're being redistributed where we need help, which is code for Upton and Time Stretch.
A subtle code.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, really close. That was a very tricky code.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. I wasn't sure if you'd be able to connect the dots there.
You didn't wink, that one.
The last, you know, I touched on this humidity, that humidity issue does, is present at all four schools. It's something we're working on. The alternative to that would be a grind-and-seal operation, which is a terrible idea. And it costs about $140,000 to protect your floor, which is worth about $80,000. So that's why I'm not in favor of doing that. So that's one thing that we avoided doing. The last issue is TJ and Upton's cabinetry is a little bit of a late arrival. Southern Cabinetry from Southern Ohio does a lot of OSFC work, and they have not made their dates.
Have not what?
Have not made their delivery dates. We actually have an office in Charleston, West Virginia, right across the river. And I send one of our guys over there to check up on him a couple of times this week and a couple of times next week. It's, as far as we are concerned, it's really Infinity's problem, because it's their subcontractor that is impacting the job. And once it finally does get here, they'll have to do something that is not planned, but just really throw manpower at it. There's nothing... There's no bearing on what's going on in the next room that has anything to do with the room you're in. So just like the VCT, it becomes an equation of manpower, so... You know, they may have to do something ridiculous, like have 30 carpenters at both, you know, combined at the two schools to throw it all in in three days, as opposed to, you know, three weeks like they planned, so.
Okay, now, I'm concerned about the furniture from this company, the Southern, and that.
It's Cabinetry.
Cabinetry, other company.
Yes.
But, so you're having somebody go...
To the plant.
To the plant and find out why we're not getting them on time?
I know why. He took too much work. He took too much work. He has too many clients. They all have the exact same delivery date. He gave me a line, to be polite, of that, you know, his business has gone to write on time, and that they don't put things in storage, and... Because there's too much damage. And that works unless all your clients want it at the exact same time. And so, he's spread too thin, he's going to second shifts, he's working on Saturdays. So he's essentially working, you know, 12 shifts a week to produce this stuff. Neither school, they're just getting started making them. Now, the casework package is not sophisticated. There isn't a lot of it. And that's why I have somebody going there this week. And then, when the first truck for Upton is supposed to leave around the Fourth of July, we're going down there to make sure it's this close to getting put on the truck. And that guy's sort of at my disposal to double-check this guy's story. I mean, he's made commitments and not followed through with them in the past. So that's why I feel the need to send somebody over there.
Okay. Any other questions?
There's just one other item I wanted to mention to you, just in case this comes up in the community at all. The winning bidder for the educational technology is NetTech out of Dublin, Ohio, down in Columbus. They are a non-union contractor. This is part of the new OSFC regulations that do not allow PLAs. If you remember, your building trades packages for TJ and Upton actually were after the law changed, and you needed to go and get a waiver. But that's the... The waiver was granted for that package only, and it was only really given because it was like two... The bid date was like two days after the law changed.
It was the day after.
The day after.
Day after. So, you know, there's... We went through it with your legal counsel. Bid was proper. He has all the scope, and there's no grounds to throw out the bid, so he got the contract.
And we had bids from union shops?
Yeah.
In the area, here or not?
We had, yes, we had Zenith, who's onsite, doing the security and technology package. But there is no grounds to dismiss the little bid, so.
Okay, and are the unions that are involved in the PLA aware of this?
Very much so.
I just, I don't know.
Yeah. My real concern is that I don't have a whole lot of time for monkey business out there. And I'm pretty sure I'm gonna get it, so I have to try and keep it to a minimum. We tried to impress upon the unions that we actually went to bat for... Not me personally, I wasn't here yet, but the district went to bat for them. And when the state was telling them no, they... You guys advocated to, you know, to continue to extend the PLA, and that, at the end of the day, they will have done 98% of the work out here, union. So sometimes that makes sense to some folks and other folks it doesn't, so.
Well, maybe we just have to remind them that there are some other projects coming down the road, we know. And hopefully, maybe there'll be a change in government, and that will result in a change in attitude towards PLAs. I mean, I know that's a lot of ifs that they can't count on, but, on the other hand...
Right.
That, you know...
Anyway, I just wanted to bring it up. These are the types of things that I'm sure you tend to get all calls about.
What's the... What's that portion? What's that contract?
It's called Educational Technology Package. It's district-wide at all four schools. It's a $900,000 contract.
It's number 77.
And that's the one that came in 260,000?
Under?
Under than?
Correct.
What the budget was.
Incidentally, Zenith was only $40,000 away.
I know. That happens, though.
Yep.
Laurie's side.
They just didn't quite, quite serve enough.
So, you know, before I actually got up here, we talked about schedule. Shoreview is... Got a couple of days of slack in it right now. I wish there was more. But, like I said, we've flushed out most of the problems at this point. So we'll do some selective overtime to just buy ourselves some insurance there. Thomas Jefferson, Bluestone, we were showing 15 days behind. We're showing 11 now. We're gonna go to some Saturdays there, which will take care of most of it, and the rest will just be cracking away.
Thank you. Any other questions for Pat before he sits down, or... Okay, you're fine, thank you. At this time, I would like to just say a thanks on behalf of the board to Mr. Klickinger. I think you're finishing up your contract with us at this point, and you've done a tremendous job, and the board appreciates all the work that you did, starting way back when you were the business manager and going on through to being our representative. And, you know, I know your heart's in it, and I do hope that you will for sure be back here for the ribbon cutting when we open these buildings and bring your infamous camera that takes lots of pictures. You know, but we really, truly appreciate all that you've done for us and your excitement about the project, which helped us get started. And I think that it's kept people going, and I really do thank you very much for that. Okay, are there any other items to come before the board? Do you have any?
No, they have nothing.
I have a couple of public service announcements.
Public service announcements, okay.
I'd like to remind the public of all of the outstanding programs going on this summer for children at the Euclid Public Library, along with the reading program. They have all kinds of programs also going on at the Euclid Mini Station. And one other item that's been on quite a few years, since we've had Safety Town in Euclid. But this year, we will have one session that's being scheduled as of now, a second one possibly in the future. But August 13th through the 7th, from 10:00 to 12:30 at the Euclid Public Library, there will be a Safety Town program, and this is for children entering kindergarten. You can register at City Hall, the police station, or Euclid Public Library.
What are those dates again?
August 13th through the 17th, from 10:00 to 12:30 at the Euclid Public Library. And we are working on a program, hopefully, a one-evening program at the Euclid Mini Station, but that's in the works, so.
No, thank you. Just one thing. Just a shout-out and congratulations to two of our Euclid graduates. Katie Carter, in diving, made it to the Olympic Trials, fell just short in the semifinals to not advance to the finals. Jessica Baird, advanced to the finals yesterday, but fell so short and came in eighth place. They take the top three, plus the fourth for an alternate. So we won't see Katie Carter diving in the Olympics. We won't see Jessica Baird running the 400 in the Olympics or part of a relay team. But we want to just say thank you for representing our community and our city as well as they did. And they're still young, and four years is not that far away, so we'll keep rooting for them, so. Thank you. Anything else from the board? Thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Sudar, second.
Second.
By Mrs. DeAngelis. Call the roll, please.
This is Lacy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
This is Sudar.
Yes.
This is Van Hope.
Yes.
This is DeAngelis.
Yes.
Here is 50.
Thank you.